Okay, I believe it is seven o'clock and it's time for us to get started. If we'll all please stand. Commissioner George is joining the members of the indication. I can have a pledge of allegiance.
Blessed be. Father Lord, we come before you now just thanking you, Father, with this blessed privilege to come together as board of commissioners conduct the business of the county. Father, we just ask your guidance and direction and know that we'll do those things that are good for the citizens of the county and it's the right thing to do. We thank you for all your grace and mercy and your blessings. And we ask these questions in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
It is time all Congress of the House of Representatives and the Gates County Board of Commissioners for January eighteenth, Pl. 17 to Florida. There are four minutes to approve at this meeting. We'll approve them at meeting, first meeting of the month. Agenda is in progress. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Madam Chairman, I would ask that we, with the board's pleasure and consent, that we add to the agenda approval to submit an application to North Carolina Council on that agency for urgent repair funding grant for 2017. In the end, $100,000. It is a grant to repair homes for the elderly, disabled, and the needy. And certainly I can have options to do that. So I would ask for your pleasure if you add that to the agenda.
Okay, we will add that as number eight on the new business. Application for funding for urgent repair program.
Twenty seventeen.
Program for twenty seventeen.
Yeah.
Okay, any additional adjustments to the agenda? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I move. Second.
Okay, motion's been made in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those aye. Okay, delegations. Okay, we have one, Joe Capenta.
Yes.
If you'll come to the podium, please, and if you will tell us your name and your address.
Well, my name is Joe Capenta. I live on 202 Willington Road. And the first I want to say is the taxes went up. They haven't gone up for a while, but they went up. And I'm discovering doesn't like be a lot of taxes. I'm not seeing a whole lot of work getting done. Okay, bridges still rose. Matthew went through here in October. There's still bridges that are damaged. Willington Road was started almost seven months ago. They got to the bridge and they stopped. Okay, Parker trucks are going up and down Parker. No police in sight. Signs say no heavy trucks, and then they're destroying the roads. Okay, my wife is a bus driver. You got potholes going through Whitehurst. Where's all this money? My taxes are going up. We're paying taxes and no work is getting done. The roads are getting terrible, right? It's just unsapp, right? Who's paying for this stuff? And why isn't it getting done?
Well, the roads are our DOT, Department of Transportation, which is a state agency. There's not a county service.
And therefore not county taxes.
Not, they're state taxes, but not county taxes.
Well, I think state taxes too. And I've been on the phone with Senator Cook. I've written letters to Governor Cory, and I'll write another letter to the new governor. But the roads aren't getting done. When they were doing the roads, the guy told me it was paid for by the county. Okay, so obviously he doesn't know what's going on. But why doesn't the board write a letter to the DOT and say, hey, we got these roads that are destroyed and no one's knowing about it? That's what you're here for. Okay, here are representatives here, represent us and say, hey, DOT, get off your proverbial duff and fix these roads before they get any worse. I mean, you got potholes. I mean, my wife's bus actually leans once you go to the potholes. It's not helping the standings. It's sure not helping the buses. And if you don't have any money for taxes or any money for the state to look on repair roads, who's gonna pay for their buses when they start getting destroyed? It's just the, the ball just starts rolling down the hill.
Okay, so certainly we can, I'm recording your concerns and we can send a letter to the DOT about potholes and the lack of repair work that have been being done on the roads in Gates County.
And if I may, there is a, on the DOT website, there is a place where you can report, report potholes. And I can post that again, we can post it on the county website and we can post it on my workplace page just so everyone is aware. But there is a location that you can do that.
Okay, what about the work that they started and never finished?
That is something you'll have to address with DOT. But she said if the board feels that they want to write a letter, they can do that.
Actually, the, I don't know if this would be a specific on Willington Road situation. You said they got to the bridge and they stopped.
They got to the bridge, they stopped, and then Matthew washed out some. They put rocks in there, so now you got a dip.
Yeah.
And then they started doing Parker. And they could have gone up the road, the whole, I think, the second eighty mile, but they didn't.
Yeah, well, what I was gonna say is that a situation like that, this may not be the case, but it could be that they get dollar allotments for specific roads and they have priorities all across the state. And each county has priorities too. And it could be that money was appropriated to go down Willington Road to the bridge only. And that might be the reason that they stopped. I don't know that would be a fact, but if they stopped there, most likely that is the reason that they just had appropriated for that length of space. But on the Parker Road, Natalie, if you will, I think Mr. Capenta's comment about Parker Road, we could certainly ask DOT to look into heavy trucks, heavy truck traffic on that road. I do know that if you're, if you're logging on a road, you know that.
Oh, I got that, yes. You're logging, you're about to go for a number of roads. I got that. But also when, when they were working on thirteen, they started going on paid rhetoric. Okay, but the truckers found paid rhetoric was really, really nice. They're still going on paid rhetoric. I use paid rhetoric every day and they, they're still on paid rhetoric.
Well, what we can do as a board, we can take your, your questions and your issues and anytime that we have jurisdiction of them, we can act on them, but when we don't, we can certainly have the county manager push that forward to the, to the right people. Now, the results after that is, is up to, to them, you know, how fast they'll act or if they'll act at all. But you certainly, I would say you're coming to the right place to.
Get started.
Well, I have no problem with that.
Okay. And we don't have to argue with Brian Lottis, even so.
We'll try to represent your issues.
Okay, appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for coming forward. If there's no one else, we'll move on to administrative reports. There are none because of this being the second meeting of the month, long of the hearing. We go to the office. His first item is historic courthouse.
I have not heard back from Clear Skates. I did ask them as directed to price out the various options that were discussed and they said that they would work on that.
Do we think we'll have a?
They did not give a timeline. I did tell them when our meeting dates were for January and February, and I've not had a response so far.
I would suggest contacting the board.
Well, this was last week when James Andrews, Andrew sent me something that said, as soon as I get something from the architects, I will provide you with a process. And that, I think, was Friday.
Well, we might need to call John. Okay. Roger. So that we can go forward on that. Okay, next is Central Middle School. Last week we had a discussion concerning that as well.
Madam Chairman, we do have some of the Board of Education representatives here. As we discussed last week, I bought the option two from the Pinnacle Architect firm that's probably the most feasible option. And considering the fact that this is something that's within possibly in our budget, it's something that's needed based on the report from the Board of Education, their maintenance, something that's needed for our school system, our children and teachers. I'd like to see us move forward, again, having Dr. Williams secure the funds to a six million dollar qualified school construction bond. And also ask Dr. Williams to request two million dollars for the qualified zone academy bond, which would make eight million dollars, and to seek approval from the LDC to enter to that type of debt to do the option two scope of work and identify that Pinnacle Architect. I think that would resolve the solution. Also, we have been made aware that we have approximately half a million dollars potentially coming in from the re-allocated sales tax that the state has given us. And we can use those funds to repay the eight million dollar loan over a fifteen year period of time at possibly no increase to our taxpayers. And if for some reason it did stop, we could possibly have to implement no more than a five three cents passing increase because we'd amortize each year based on what we paid. And over a fifty year, year period of time, I would foresee nothing close to more than five cents, probably three to two cents depending on how long it lasted. So I would like to see us move forward with requesting the Board of Education proceeding with securing the bond money, six million dollars QSCB, two million dollars QCAB. And once that's done, then we could notify the LDC of what our intentions are and how we intend to pay the loan.
I spoke with Dr. Matthews last week, and I've had a follow-up, I mean, I've had a detailed conversation with him, much more than what I've done in the email, because I've done some research. And I asked him what if, once the bids come back, it shows that there's less than six million needed in the qualified school academy bond, I mean, qualified school construction bond, and there's more needed than the two million in the qualified zone academy bonds? How does we proceed? And he said, well, if you've already gone to the bank and you secure, the county has secured the six million, one of the two million QZAB, you deal with the bank and you figure it out from there. He said, however, if it comes back that you need, and I'm just making numbers, I'm gonna make eight million, if you need five million for the qualified school construction bond and you need three million of the QZAB, he said, then you, as the county, come back and tell us, this is what the bid, this is what the school board selected, this is how we need to amend our documents with you. Then we will amend the documents to get the amount of money that we needed and then talk to the bank and secure all of the actual funding. And I did find this out today, and I'm glad Dr. Williams is here, so I would like for him to address this. I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but it was about quarter till six before, when I found this. It says for the qualified zone academy bonds, that you have to have a partnership and that you have to have at least a written agreement between one or more local businesses with at least ten percent of gross proceeds of the QZABs. And I know there's various partnerships that you already have, so you're confident that you have that ten percent.
Well, you know, I was first thinking five million and then I first turned a thousand if I'm correct. So we're just saying two million, the next two hundred thousand, money that we would have as a match, whether that be technology, just all sorts of things to meet that. So yeah, you're right on that.
Okay. And that's what I thought we had discussed, but I wanted to verify.
Sure. Dr. Williams.
Come to the podium so everyone can hear your point. I just wanted to.
I didn't mean to come. I, I'm gonna speak with Mr. Johnny Clark. He's our DPI. He's a gentleman that works under Dr. Ben Matthews concerning the qualified zone academy bond. I've got everything filled out. We have a Board of Education meeting tomorrow. We have to get that approved. I'll recommend that to the board for the qualified zone academy bond. And I think I've got that information and I'll have that through to Johnny Clark. He's gonna make sure that I get that filled out correctly. But there's several steps and we gotta do is make sure we can secure that. The school construction bond, that's good to go.
Right, Doc, we have to put something in writing as indicated in the email from Dr. Matthews, saying this, this is what we've discussed and we do plan on moving forward. And right now we're asking for the six million dollars. And then he said if something does change after January thirty first, once the bids come in and it's less that's needed renewed, then we could contact him again.
Madam Chairman, if you need me to make that into a motion, and then we have discussion.
I think that would be the best way to proceed.
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion that we notify Board of Education via the county manager to move forward with securing the six million dollar qualified construction bond for the North Carolina Department of Instruction as confirmed by Ben Matthews to rebuild slash renovate Central Middle School as described in option two of the Pinnacle Architect firm's scope of work. And that we notify Board of Education by county manager to move forward with requesting an additional two million dollars qualified zone academy bond for the North Carolina Department of Instruction to cover the renovation part of the Central Middle School as described in option two of the Pinnacle Architect firm's scope of work.
That motion has been made for us to proceed with the six million from the QSCB bond and two million for the QCAB. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, now we can have discussion.
Okay, I have a point to clarify that you, you are asking that the Board of Education contact Dr. Matthews, correct, right? And Dr. Matthews' email says for the commissioners to contact him in writing.
I can make that motion that county manager contact Dr. Matthews in regards to, yes.
This is second agreeable.
Second agreeable.
Okay, now we can have discussion, okay? Is there any suspension?
Madam Chairman, I'm getting ready to go spend a whole lot of money. A long range money will be taxed for many, many years to come. I've asked repeatedly for two things and have not got them, and that was a long range plan for all schools, not just this one school. Because we're gonna be committing a lot of money for one school, and other schools are gonna be needing something. We have no plan, or we have not seen any plan for the rest of the schools for the next five, ten years. Also, I've requested a prioritized list of the problems at Central Schools, and I have not seen that yet either.
Okay, is that, okay, right? Commissioner Frank?
No, I, I just wanna make sure that, that we all understand this option two, the single option two in our proposal. And do you want that as part of the motion, saying option two is?
I think he said that.
Yeah, it's fine.
I think, Commissioner Owens?
Well, the motion, the motion that, that was made second is made, Commissioner, that made, the motion that you're making is addressing the option two presented by Pinnacle. And of course, we all understand, and we stated earlier, everything's going big, so we're just records in the Pinnacle, that that, that method of fixing the school is the method that we're talking about.
Right, they provide a scope of work. They're gonna tear down the old gymnasiums and the classrooms associated with that, set it apart, fall it back, so they can have the parking out there. And they're gonna renovate that new, the newest part. And I think that's about the most complete vision, the one that doesn't leave at all the old section, basically, and it's almost like a new school. The other options, the five point five million, whatever, that's basically a window dressing. The first one, Chesson and Pinnacle, we're basically talking about repairing the school and anytime you get total renovation, that's almost gonna cost as much as a new school entirely. So to me, the option two from Chesson and Pinnacle was, was, was the best two options. And I believe Pinnacle was several million dollars less than Chesson. So, and you're getting basically about the same thing, what I'm, what I'm seeing.
Yeah, and I'm agreeing with what on this paper presented to us. But just specifically, I'm just, and no issue with either firm that submitted their evaluation for something, but county manager, there'll be an RAP to go out.
Yes.
And other people to compete on the scope of work, and they come in at less or not long. So just, just wanna put that out there. I mean, you referenced Pinnacle, I'm just, just going there. And really what we're doing here is we're procuring the six million dollars with this, with this document to, to Mr. Matthews to, to nail down those dollars.
Right.
So there's a lot to get forward from here.
I think I better.
Okay. Are you saying?
Yeah, I'm, I'm pretty, I just wanna be clear with it.
Okay, are you responding to him?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I better understand what your question now is that the, the Pinnacle was just an identification for.
Right.
And not saying that we want Pinnacle, that's what we want. But a request proposal will have to go out and the other have to design and provide a contract for contractors to bid on. So that's the next step, is request a proposal, the design just worked. And, but no, that's just, yeah, I better understand.
Yeah, where are you saying?
I think all of us on board understand we have to do something, quite simply. I just want to stand, I mean, there is the monetary position that we're in with the local government commission, and there are restrictions on how much we can borrow. And at current, at our general fund expenditures, we can do about fifteen percent of that. So we can only carry so much of the debt obligation, which is about 1.65 million. And right now, debt service on what we currently have is about 951,000. However, we are going to be paying off the liability in March, and that will save us 151,000. But when we talk about the six million, that means a payment each year for the next fifteen years, and we, if we do fifteen, of 400,000, it does not reduce. If, and of course, that's with the assumption that it's no interest. But we still haven't paid that principal of six million, and that's at 400 million, I mean, 400,000. The two million is probably about 135,000 per payment, per year. So that's about a little over a half a million dollars more. So, you know, like at this time, with this year, that would be, we would be buttoned up to about one and a half million dollars in debt service. And that does leave about 150,000, which, you know, we don't, we can't go all the way up to the top still. So just keep that in mind. And, you know, there are several things. We have been fortunate that there has been redistribution sale tax that the General Assembly has given, and that will give us money coming in that was unexpected for us. That, of course, the General Assembly has given that to us, but you know the General Assembly's meaning, and they can take it away as well. So, you know, you have to prepare for that contingency as well. And that money comes in quarterly.
Right, it's, so far to date, we have received July, August, and September, and we have received 109,000, right under 140,000.
So that certainly, if we multiply that by four, we would get.
Just right under, if, just basing it off of the last two months' estimates, because that's where the oldest estimate, be about five, more or less than 560,000.
So that would help us immensely with that.
And, excuse me, if you'd like to add, for the taxpayers, that must be used on either economic development, community college, or public school.
So that is restricted, I find, we can use that. So that definitely goes to the schools. I know there is concern about taxes, and you said something about raising the taxes. And, you know, we are in a reval year. And so that is also interesting because that is the jeopardy of debt. Right now, with our current tax evaluation, one cent will raise about 92,000. But we don't know what it will raise next year because we have that final number on reval, the reevaluation. So, you know, we'll keep that in mind and make sure, try and stay revenue neutral. Because a county budget is probably not going to go down, which is what I think about 11 million dollars now. So we have to take that money in. So we don't know how much one cent will raise next year. So that's something, I mean, that has to go in our thought processes of how we're going to make sure that we pay for the school. And that has to be, you know, we have to factor about the debt limitation, we have to factor how much one cent will raise and what burden it puts on county residents. And we are taking all that into consideration. And so, like I say, the guidance has been that the redistribution of sales tax, and if that continues at that present rate, we will not have to raise taxes forever.
That would be the assumption, yes?
Or it'll be, or just it'll be very much us all night. Because we do know there are some increases coming. Solid waste is going to have to, we're running a deficit, so somehow we're gonna have to make up some funds there. And of course, everything goes up. So, you know, we have to kind of keep all those things in mind. So that's how, that's the thought process goes in there. Also, we have to keep a fund balance for the state, and we'll look together with all counties from zero to 25,000 population. And could not get statistics for 2016 because everybody's didn't have the outlets in and not much of fund balances are. In our category, the fund balance average for counties of our size is 34.72 percent. We are not at 34.72, that's the average, where the, and of course, averages the median, we're all below you. So we have to keep that in mind too, because they don't want the fund balance to drop by a certain level as well. Because there can be catastrophic events. A poor, pure, or high county a couple of years ago really got in trouble, not because of mismanagement, but because they had a storm come through and flood. Well, FEMA came in and helped clean it up, but they had to continue to pay the workers, county workers and all, and FEMA. the county workers and all, and FEMA is notorious for being very slow on repayment. And they almost wiped, they wiped out the fund balance. So that's why they, state forests have that. You know, during this whole process, that's why I think we are very concerned about having a plan, about what happens for all schools. Because we have three schools, they're nineteen fifties, and they have problems. And we just not have an abundant amount of money. So it's something catastrophic happens at one of those schools, we've got to have some funds on hand as well. And so you need to develop a long-range plan. So, and because, you know, there has to be, become, and that's why we are kind of preaching this plan, so that we will, you know, we want to do right by the students, but we also have a discipline responsibility to the residents of the county, to operate the most efficient way we can, and to our taxpayers. So, you know, it goes hand in hand, and, you know, you need to be efficient, think like the size of the schools, and the student population, and the trends that are coming in the future. Okay. And I know probably you all might not have been interested in that, but all that goes in our thought process.
Absolutely.
And it's not just easy, you're saying yes and no, you've got to know where the money's coming from.
Now, I'm telling one other thing, too. And I miss the prioritizing thing. We all, I think we all agree, but Ruth is probably top priority for everything down there, once that's done, there'll be a whole lot will be taken care of. But in this option that Commissioner Jordan mentioned, it's to renovate seventh grade wing, and just, just for anybody that has not had a chance to look at this. And the new construction consists of an eighth grade wing, a gymnasium, locker rooms, media center, music and band rooms, art room, a group toilet, teacher room, two teacher work rooms, and an administrative area, including guidance and student support services. That's what's included in this option we're speaking of. Dr. Williams, could you elaborate a little bit on that group toilet?
You know, I think that may be, that's Pinnacle, but if you kept up with the Supreme Court decisions on Wild Chester, where you have a student who, I mean, so rights act nineteen sixty four with gender issues, gender follows in that class of a race, gender, national origin, and so gender identity follows in there. So if you have a group toilet, then you have an area where you can't be sued by someone who's saying they're being discriminated against, and so the rights act nineteen sixty four.
So that's, that's a legal precaution in there.
Yes, sir.
Right. North Carolina, that's not where he is. Hate to get that, that's a passive.
No, I feel it, it's a field, old book right now.
But it's just a legal caveat, that could change.
Yes, sir.
Okay, any other discussion?
The motion for us is to instruct county manager Friday to notify Dr. Matthews about that we would like to proceed with six million, and two million, one for the QSCB, which is six million, QBAB is what, two million. Another caveat that we might note, it's not, not written as stone that this leaves zero interest. It could, we might have to pay interest, and of course, that could change the calculations as well.
And, Madam Chairman, on that note, we are asking our county manager to do due diligence, whereas there may not be local institutions that want that incentive. The bonds are an incentive for many of the lending institutions we have a tax right on. You know, we may have to go to other, other cities, or even, I don't know, we can go out of state, but certainly-
I think we do out of state.
There are institutions that are looking for those tax creators, and we just have to do our due diligence and try and find the one that will pay.
I think there is a list on the LGC about-
About six, five or six institutions on there.
Okay. But, you know, we don't know. We have no idea.
I'd just like to add that, you know, this is an opportunity to accomplish something that we need to accomplish, with potentially not having increasing taxes. As you pointed out, we don't know how long this reallocation of sales tax proceeds are gonna last, but the last six years, that's gonna be a big help. And with portion of the last ten years, my goodness, you know, we, we, you may not even see, I'm not gonna have increased taxes, you know, based on what I've been, I have a situation for. But I think this is, as you pointed out, blessed in disguise. Thank you, more.
As I said, library we paid off this year in March, and the school debt that we currently have is approximately, we can have like three million, almost what, two billion, eight hundred and forty five thousand dollars in school debt can pre this project. And if it can last one, two, three, four, five, six, six years, we'll have that paid off.
I mean, Dr. Williams, that's one of the-
He gives up very heavy.
Okay, Dr. Williams.
You know, I heard you say something about an R and P, and just sitting there, I'd like to request, just to make sure that you know and understand the way I kind of see it, I see that a little bit differently, is that the Board of Education selects the architectural firm, that would be a request for, for proposed or anything like that. You can have the county manager to check with Dr. Jim Watson, the gentleman that came up and spoke with each of you. That's just, and the reason I bring that up, the reason, the significance of that, is because we would eventually have to contact Pinnacle and get a contract with them. And then once you do that, then that's when you go to the LGC and get on the agenda and then do what you need to do.
Are you saying that school board would contract separately with Pinnacle, and that's not gonna be part of the-
That's right. From my understanding, that Dr. Jim Watson has done this several times, that's the authorization of the Board of Education, you know.
The clarification, because I did mention the R and P can be. So you're telling me that, and not opposed to this, just clarification.
Yes, sir.
The Board of Education can select Pinnacle without an R and P?
Yes, sir.
Is that right?
Yes, sir.
So the Board of Education can do that, county commissioners cannot? So there's not a threshold of dollars or anything like that?
No, sir. And that's from my understanding, and I'm sure you maybe want to get this round through to check on me, and it's fine, but we just have this board meeting tomorrow, and if we're gonna move forward, then I'd like to get that agreement to the Board of Education.
So now that you brought that up-
Yes, sir.
So let me throw out some, some questions and comments. So let's say that your board gets together, and they, you know, you've got us helping you here-
Yes, ma'am.
-with our motion to get rid of voting. So your board gets together, and we voted on what we're seeing here.
Yes, sir.
But in reality, somewhere along the line, for good reason, your board decides that one of these items in here is not necessary, or your board says, you know, we've got nine items here, let's add a tenth, because this needs-
Yes, sir.
Okay, for the right reason.
Yes, sir.
We voted on what we see here, not opposed to, to you changing this if it's, if it's a reality. But you're not going to, your board's also not going to look for the scope of work to get it done for half a million dollars less, or three hundred thousand dollars less? In other words, you've dialed in on Pinnacle?
Yes.
Sounds like?
Yes, sir.
Okay. But you are gonna have room to move, let's say you're staying with the same dollar amount exactly, or, you know, a hundred thousand dollars, and you see the need to make a change in here, you're gonna do that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Just so you stay within the pay-
Yes, yes, ma'am, very, very.
Don't go back and ask for your money.
And I'm just, I'm just making that comment here before my board, so that we can hear, hear those things, because I have no idea, all the things we've ever done, I'm really surprised.
I'm just gonna check into that, because I'm-
No R and P.
I've been looking through my files, and it's not, it's not on here, so it's in another notebook. That was not information that was provided in the contracting class I attended in the department, and spoke with the attorney who taught the class.
And I'm not, I'm not opposed to Pinnacle, you have no, no issue there. It's just that, as Ms. Hopper said, I am sitting here forward-
Right.
-because I know we, we've spent far less money on project, a different project, and we couldn't even begin to go very many steps for R and Ps out there. So I'm just surprised.
No, but I have asked twice myself, Dr. Watson, just to make sure.
And also, this is a best guess estimate of cost by Pinnacle.
It's an educated guess.
Educated guess. And certainly, when we get a design, when we get the contract specifications spelled out-
Yes.
-contractors may come in at six point five million.
They may go lower, that's exactly right. And that's what Mr. Randy Baker from the Pinnacle informed me.
The library came in around a hundred and sixty five thousand dollars, I remember correctly.
So, you know, this is the design favors.
Yes, sir.
So when we get into contract bidding, it might turn out to be-
Could be, could be.
Twenty percent.
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Just for now? Eighteen?
I got you.
We appreciate all the work that your board has done.
The board has done a tremendous amount of work.
And there, there are some things to, when we had our discussion, to, to reiterate, Commissioner Felton down here, there are, the couple of things he mentioned, because see, we're already, now we're already saying, okay, who's next? Is it Bubba or is it T S Coop? And the things that Commissioner Felton has asked for would help us tremendously, so we can be doing our planning. But, you know, we said we want to start a sinking fund.
You know, I have a comment for you, Mr. Felton. We did submit a, a five to ten-year plan, and it went through a gentleman named Andrew LaRoe, and it's a document that was signed off back in April, and it's in a binder about that thick. And I can, I, I plan to meet with Mr. LaRoe on the twenty fourth of this month to condense that information for each of you, and it tells everything in that notebook. I mean, it tells predictions of class size, students coming in, what you need, what the roof looks like at the bottom, the sources, everything. So that, that was submitted back in April.
Is this new school included in there?
Yes, sir.
Okay, any further comments? Hear none? Is everybody prepared to vote? Do you have something else to add?
Last thing, I'm making a interruption, and I know that's rude, but after your vote, will you let me know, can I recommend to the board to talk to Pinnacle tomorrow? That's my comment, that's one thing.
Well, it's important. It's important how the vote goes.
That's what I'm saying, you know, before you vote, okay? Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Okay.
Okay. The motion before us is to proceed with the two bonds, or two, the QSCB for six million, the QBAB for two million, to go by Pinnacle option two, at scope of work. Is everybody clear on what we are voting on? I think we'll need to have a show of hands concerning this, and if it continues with the tax re, sales tax redistribution, we will not have to raise taxes. Okay? All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed?
I'm going to say vote against, but I appreciate Dr. Williams telling me that there is a plan in place, and that's the reason, not, not that he told me, but that's the reason I'm gonna vote against it, because I have not seen a plan, and I really cannot vote, commit as much money without knowing what's going on.
And I appreciate your comments, concern about, certainly do need to, you know, you don't have a vision, not only for schools, but for the county, as we try to plan our budgets and get our work done, and provide services to our citizens. Okay, the vote was four to one to proceed with the QB, QSCB, and the QBAB bond and scope of work outlined in option two of Pinnacle. Okay?
Madam Chairman, I think that gives Dr. Williams what he was asking about long ago, share with his board the results of the vote.
Okay, we're going to the next one. There, before us on our table tonight was an application for urgent repair.
Madam Chairman, I think on the agenda is the senior games request, that's in your pocket.
Oh, excuse me, I apologize, I was, that was old business. Okay, I, I'll jump in ahead. New business, senior games request, this is something we get each year, the Alamooral Commission on Area Agency on Aging, it's called the Thirty Third Senior Games in the spring of 2017, and they are asking for a monetary funds to help offset costs of that. This is a part of Alamooral Commission, and we do have people in our county that participate in these things.
This is the proclamation to recognize April Senior Games Participation Month. We do receive that one, but we've not received that for this month.
Oh, we always receive the one for requests.
I, I really, I looked for that, and I said, they didn't answer any ones.
Okay. I apologize.
That's okay.
Commissioner Owens, how about reading the proclamation?
Now, would you like me to start right here?
Yeah, where is?
Okay, all right. Designation of April Senior Games Participation Month. Propagation reads, whereas mature adults in the entire community look forward to the Alamooral Senior Games, an Olympic-style event designed to create year-round health promotion and competition for participants that are fifty years of age and better. And whereas, the Alamooral Senior Games held March twenty seventh through May twenty third of this year, is sanctioned by North Carolina Senior Games Incorporated. And whereas, the Alamooral Senior Games takes a holistic approach by involving the body, mind, and spirit of its athletes, and promoting the importance of aging in a healthy manner. And whereas, the regional event engaging with counties of Camden, Chawan, Curritah, Gates, High, Pasquetan, Quimmins, Turrell, and Washington, with the goal to enhance growth, development, and connection to opportunity for all participants and volunteers, was founded thirty-three years ago in 1984. And whereas, participants will compete in a total of forty-eight athletic events and thirty-four artistic categories. And whereas, our well wishes are extended to all of the competitors. Now, therefore, this date, Gates County, hereby proclaims that April be recognized as Senior Games Participation Month in the county of, and promotes participa- participation as well as volunteerism within the Alamooral Senior Games program.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
So move.
Motion's been made, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been made, second discussion. Hear none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And I do know that we do have citizens who participate.
And win.
And win, and go on to the state games.
Right.
Okay, we also have a null resolution, and this is coming from Derek County, that opposes the designation of special secondary nursery areas. This is concerning fishing and the harvesting of shrimp off the coast, our coast. Commissioner Owens, you want to read the next proclamation?
I'll read it. I'll accept tips. Opposing the designation of special secondary- Opposing the designation of special secondary nursery areas. Whereas a petition for rulemaking to designate special secondary nursery areas and reduce bycatch mortality has been submitted to the North Carolina Marine Fisheries Commission by the North Carolina Wildlife Federation. And whereas petition seeks to designate all inshore and ocean waters out to three miles as special secondary nursery areas, and define the type of gear and how and when gear may be used during shrimp season. And whereas, if adopted, petition would severely limit shrimp trawling, which would have a devastating impact on commercial fishing families by arbitrarily impairing their livelihood and depriving American tables of fresh, healthy catches of North Carolina harvested shrimp. And whereas shrimp trawling has been a vibrant and successful part of North Carolina's heritage and culture for all of its history, and represents a means by which generations of commercial watermen create jobs, provide for their families, contribute to the economic well-being of North Carolina's coastal communities. And whereas existing state and federal regulations provide ample provision for monitoring and regulation of commercial shrimping and serious penalties and sanctions for rule violations, which have proven to be effective in preventing overfishing and waste. Now, therefore, we have resolved that Dare County Board of Commissioners hereby opposes petition for rulemaking to designate special secondary nursery areas and reduce bycatch mortality in North Carolina coastal fishing waters as set forth by the North Carolina Wildlife Federation, and strongly urges the North Carolina Marine Fisheries Commission to reject it. Be it further resolved that the Dare County Board of Commissioners ask all coastal communities to support North Carolina's working watermen by adopting similar resolutions in opposition to this petition for rulemaking that would put North Carolina's shrimp in jeopardy. And that's adopted by, uh, well, it's already been adopted by Dare County, and they're asking us to support.
Wouldn't that be Gates County?
Oh, yes, uh.
You said Dare.
Yeah, in our document.
In our document, it would be.
That's right. The place that we read was a Pinnacle.
And they did change the name to, um, Pinnacle. Um, County Manager, do you have anything more than what's on this?
No, I don't have anything.
Basically, the Dare County Commissioners think that it's an overreach, and just more regulations on them just to make it harder for them to, to do what they do.
Yeah, they take a living off the, from fishing.
It seems like they have no due diligence to, uh, kind of decide that it's not gonna really affect the environment for these species of shrimp depletion, so.
And another thing too, when, when I was reading it earlier, that poem, you know, it says in here that there are regulations in, on the books with stiff Pimples that are working, you know? And, uh, I mean, they would be foolish, um, now, I'm not talking about the, the board up there, but fishermen themselves be foolish to put themselves out of, out of business. So, Madam Chairman, I, I would make a motion that we approve the resolution and put our Chairman's signature on here saying we support them and their effort.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Yes, ma'am, second amendment.
Okay, and additional discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Aye, I'll get going to number eight. The application for funding of urgent repair program for twenty seventeen. Uh, this was on our, uh, at our table tonight when we got here. I had not had time to glance over it. County Manager, what, do you have a comment?
Yes, I have.
Well, Megan, go ahead.
I have quite a few comments and concerns regarding this application, but I will let Commissioner Jordan go ahead and explain and see as I'm housing committee.
Well, what we have here is, is basically the same application that we submitted last year. This is the urgent repair program that is designed to repair homes for the elderly, low-income, and needy of disabled in the county, uh, in an amount of eight thousand, a grant amount of eight thousand dollars per home. We had this grant back in two thousand fourteen, or twelve, somewhere, several hundred years ago. And it really was, uh, something that helped the citizens of the county, that need, uh, sits, it's in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars. It comes out yearly. Last year, we were not able to get it because, uh, for some reason, I guess we had received several other grants, and they felt some other counties needed it worse. But we have an opportunity to get it this year to help our citizens that do need it. Uh, it is, uh, no cost to the county, however, the county we do normally provides some funds for the housing committee, and we, uh, missed those funds here. Uh, I think this year we gave three thousand. But, um, other than that, it's another opportunity to help the citizens of the county that need it. And, uh, I would certainly ask the board, the member of the housing committee, to authorize submitting uh, the U R P seventeen urgent repair program grant, uh, that we obtained this, this hundred thousand dollar fund to assist those citizens in the county that need, uh, home repair assistance.
Okay, County Manager?
Okay, one of my concerns is something that Commissioner Jordan just brought up. On here it says matching local funds is five thousand dollars. And I'm aware this year that that money is being used for other local projects and to assist with paying the, um, housing coordinator, correct?
Well, we give the housing coordinator stipend per month. Uh, we do have, uh, other funds coming in in addition to county funds. Uh, the, the churches, uh, and businesses of the county provide, uh, funding as well. Uh, in order to have a housing coordinator to take down the day-to-day, uh, or week-to-week legwork of, of, uh, contacting homeowners in need, filling out applications, and that sort of thing, uh, you can't expect them to do it for anything. And we give them a stipend, a spare small stipend, uh, about five hundred dollars probably, and, uh, but for the work that's accomplished in the houses that are repaired, uh, that's a, a small amount, uh, for the goodwill to give to our county.
Right, and I'm not against the purposes of this application. I'm thinking about concerns when I spoke with Mr. Handley when we were at the, he is at the Essential Single Family Rehab Home Program, and we discussed why this was not received. So that's why I'm bringing up these questions, since I received this today as well. Um, but this five thousand, the local funds, they have fees for hard costs. And I just hope, the, I know Ms. Holly is here, she was here, um, that that has fees for hard costs, so that's not the funds to pay the housing coordinator. And I was just wondering, and this was a concern that was mentioned as well in past, on the past application, about the volunteer labor. I did some research, uh, right before this meeting, and the estimated value of volunteer time for two thousand fifteen was twenty-three dollars and fifty-six cents per hour. And if you just use that and calculate that, that's over twenty-one hundred volunteer hours for this project.
Thank you. Which, which line on?
The, on page three, E, number six, volunteer labor. And like I said, these are just things that Mr. Handley kind of brought out in general discussions that I feel like need to be brought forward, since it looks like the application is the same one that was submitted last year.
Since, well, twenty-one, you know, when you say twenty-one hundred hours, the average person works two thousand forty hours a, a year. So you're talking basically one year of labor per person. Um, keep in mind, a housing coordinator does some hammering and nailing as well. Uh, when you consider, uh, the Baptist Men Association, and you consider the time, sometimes churches will, will have two or three people come in and, and, and help on a project, when you group those together, this is an asset.
And I understand, like I said, I'm not, I'm just bringing out points that he brought to us, so that if they come back and ask questions, the housing committee can be prepared to address. And I know that, on page seven, I'm not sure, and this is something that I did not have time to look upon their, the Housing Finance Association web, agency website, where it says the U R P logic administration, is that the person that is responsible for all of the paperwork or just signing off on the paperwork?
Well, I, I can't speak specifically to that, but I, I believe in twenty sixteen that you were, that was your role as well, if you look on that application. And, um, it has to be the, I think it's the senior inventory official of the county, so that gives the county grant. So the...
So you think it's just signing off on it?
It's just a sign off. Basically, the contact person that you, in the county.
On page five, I believe the dates are correct, or the, just the top is older.
Yeah, because it says twenty twelve on everybody.
Twenty twelve.
These were grants that were received or that were applied for through various funding sources, through, um, I can't answer that, through the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency.
I should say, uh, well, see, right, those, what they're asking for there is, they want to know, what is your history in working with U R P grants? And those are grants, we had one in two thousand twelve, and so that's, that's really a storied experience.
They've had one since then, have they?
Uh, I, 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 U R P, and, uh, with...
C D B G, yeah, they're, okay.
Part of grants.
Yeah, we had one, we had single family we had in two thousand thirteen as well.
Hey, but that has, is that still going on? It, it doesn't say it's closed down?
Right, I don't think, we haven't closed it out yet, uh, I don't think so.
I think they're all closed down.
So that should be an X, shouldn't it? If it's closed down?
We don't have, oh, yeah, okay. Okay, um, current status.
Dees, Dees has a, asks for codes updating, there's one in there, three twenty-four.
Uh, that may be something that, that we can research. I'm, I'm not sure if Dees was aware, she didn't have the information, but certainly you can check that, and it's closed out, all the others were handed in.
That's the twenty thirteen?
Or the point one for two thousand twelve either, the eleven C, twenty-three twelve.
Yeah, both of those are closed down, pretty sure. So if we can just, we can just complete that.
Now, um, on this last page, uh, number seven.
Please.
Now, this, James Bogard, I don't know him, uh, but he's construction oversight, writes up the cost, he inspects, he takes in applicant intake and eligibility, the councils and referrals, and he's construction supervisor and job site foreman.
Right, he, he is a housing foreman, and, uh, that is one that we give the stipend to, to, he does the labor for a housing manager.
And he works one day a week and does all this?
Well, no, he, he's in the office on one day a week, but in his spare time, uh, he, he, uh, works all these.
We're talking small projects.
Right, we're talking small projects, but, uh, uh, you know, we, we're not in a position to pay a full-time person.
No, I'm sure.
And, um, so we were able to get him in on Tuesdays, but the other times he may be on Saturday, but he, uh, he repairs, he puts tall roofs and roofs and shingles on a Saturday, that's what I mean, when he's available.
And this is federal money, correct?
The U R P grant, I won't say that it is a, I, I would have to look, make sure of that, but I would think this is a federal grant.
And that's all I get, across, over the fence.
Those grants, a hundred percent, but they also set five twenty-five and fifty-fifty, or?
No, actually, we, we don't have to have a match for this. Uh, the five thousand dollars that, uh, County Manager was mentioning was, but, uh, these are other resources that can be used for hard car. And, uh, we listed the five thousand dollars that officials normally give the housing committee, because last year we did three thousand, but, uh, that's normally what they, what they ask for.
This money is from the, huh, I just found it on the website.
That is that.
Okay, um, what is the closure for?
Make a motion.
Yes.
All right, Madam Chairman, I, I'll make a motion that we authorize the housing committee to, uh, submit the twenty seventeen urgent repair program grant applicant, uh, for the amount of one hundred thousand dollars for citizens paid by.
Okay, a motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in the second. And an additional discussion?
The, the twenty units, is that referring to twenty homes, basically?
Yes, about twenty, that's the, the twenty, so.
And so each is a, um, if you do twenty, it's small repairs, roofs, or like putting in ramps?
Right. We can use up to eight thousand dollars per home, but we estimate about four thousand to get twenty. But, you know, there again, if we go to six thousand dollars, we may be able to do one or two, but we still think we can get about twenty, twenty homes.
And Ms. Hopper, not, uh, not really a discussion, just a comment for, for the public. We, we've had this grant in the past, and, um, we've put bathrooms in people's homes that, not repaired bathrooms, we've put bathrooms in homes that did not have bathrooms with this type of, as well as repaired porches, so people won't fall and break their leg.
And ramps.
Right, and where people just, um, it would never take in place if they didn't have it, uh, this, uh, this money. And it's federal money, somebody's gonna get it.
At what percentage?
Well, it's, uh...
And just so people who acquired, if they resp, if the county receives the funding, it is a loan, but it is forgiven as long as they remain in the home, which like the city we do.
Can't fix a house or anything, so.
Right, yes.
And I might add, uh, Ms. Holly is not here right now, but the housing committee partially started as a result of our social service workers having to go in their homes, and many times, those homes were so dangerous, our so, social service workers could barely, you know, feel safe and wanted to go and walk on the floor, and four almost fall through. And, uh, and the housing committee was partially started to try to help those homeowners who could not help themselves living in homes that was, uh, was not basically living, and to make them safe for people to, to go into. So, you know, we've accomplished a lot. We've, we've helped the county, helped our workers as well as helping those who are, uh, who need the help.
And certainly, if, um, anything we can do to improve the lives of our citizens and make it safe and a warm place to be, um, certainly we, we'll do that.
Um, I would, if I estimated, I'd say we'd probably done closer to seventy-five hundred homes in a year, you know, for the last four years.
Okay. Money put to good use, um, to help our citizens. Okay, um, before we move from new business, I believe we probably need a motion by, um, Mr. Profetto, uh, will you say something by going?
We didn't.
Oh, a vote, I'm sorry, I'm jumping ahead. Okay, uh, motion's been made in the second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? I was just trying to get on here.
I, I would also ask that, uh, the County Manager would overnight this to talk to our finance agency to try to get it to them for monthly. I would rather than mail it once we, once we...
That, I would assume that would have been the housing committee's responsibility.
Well, would you let this...
I don't know, Ms. Holly never wanted.
Yeah, that we need overnight.
Right, because we'll need to fix those documents once we get that finished.
So we get there by class.
Okay, um, I know Mr. Profetto is keen and talked about the roads and the trucks, and we said we could write a letter, but I think we probably need a motion to direct that to be done.
I'll take care of that. Um, Madam Chairman, in, in response to, uh, Mr. Joe Profetto's comments about the, uh, conditions of the roads, whatever, I'd like to make a motion that we have...
of the roads, whatever, I'd like to make a motion that we have the County Manager contact the proper authorities, make them aware of what we heard tonight, and ask them to look into it.
Would you, uh, Madam, why don't I have the chairman sign it or the board?
On behalf of the board, absolutely. I'd add that to my motion. Madam Chairman, can you become, um, sign that?
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second.
Uh, motion's been made in second, um, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, is any on new business? I think I covered all that. Uh, any citizens' comments? Okay, moving right on. Commissioners' comments? We will start down there with Commissioner Freeman.
Uh, welcome everyone and, and certainly their input tonight. Uh, we've, from time to time, we've had some difficult conversations, and subsequently we, uh, exposed some conflict and, and, uh, some differences, if you will. But it stimulates thinking for us, and, uh, we all agree to agree from a disagreement. So, uh, thank you for being here, and, uh, have a happy new year.
It's always good to see citizens' participation, glad to see everybody here. Randy hadn't been recognized back there, I'll see him back in the back tonight, and glad to see him too. Always glad to see our sheriff, right? Glad to have him on such a side.
I'd like to thank everyone for being here, and Billy, I'll look back a little bit, I've got, uh, quite a few, uh, my district here, and I, and I...
You're, you're a body, yeah.
And I appreciate you all being here, uh, just to hear what we are dealing with, and we do try to make the best decisions that we can for the county, and, uh, hopefully these things will work out where we can see great benefit and enjoy the benefits that we've, uh, managed to have.
I thank everyone for being here tonight, and, uh, I went to school in Nash County, but I had a teacher from Gates County, her name was Miss Nailed it, and she taught me how to read. So I'm gonna call her tomorrow and tell her to look at the video, so she can see that she does halfway decent job. Thank everyone for being here.
And, um, Ms. Moon and I were classmates.
Is that my name?
So, um...
That's awesome.
So, um, I'm glad that she did her job. I do also thank you for coming tonight, and I think you've seen that a lot of time and energy goes into making decisions, and a lot of things that you have to consider about, um, making decisions. Certainly, I don't think any of us would, are opposed to education and helping our schools, but there's, there's the reality of we've got to pay for it, and there's so many different little parts of it, and I'm very proud of our board. We have done our due diligence, I think, um, we have expressed our opinions frankly, and like, um, Commissioner Freeman says, we agree, sometimes we disagree, but we are always civil and respectful of each other, and I think that is helpful for the county, that we don't, um, go and walk south, that we need to have a variety of opinions, and because I have a variety of opinions, you generally get a go solution. And hopefully, I think, tonight we got a better solution than what we originally started with, and so I'm very proud of the board. Uh, I hope all of you have a wonderful rest of the year. We will have our next commissioners' meeting on February sixth, not on February first, uh, so we'll be meeting on Monday, February sixth at ten a.m. So, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Uh, Moon, I'm trying to have, why are we holding it for Monday?
Because I was scheduled to attend a class, however, due to all my responsibilities and the potential of a new finance officer starting to work on February first, I will not be attending, but the meeting has been posted on October sixth, that was voted on these days.
We had it on our calendar, but it's, uh, it's easier not to change. Same time, same time, same place, just on Monday. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved? Second motion, that's good.
Motion's been made in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, but I'm hearing, so we are yurk.